I'm going to wait on merit.
Call the February 3rd, 2020 Belvedere City Council Regular Meeting to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Brereton?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Frank? Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present?
You stand with Pledge of Allegiance, main standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all of you magnificent gifts. We ask for your presence and guidance tonight as our city council convenes to do the work of our beloved Belvedere community. Today's world is fraught with crime, dishonesty, selfishness, lack of faith, whipped into a frenzy by political extremists and by media to serve dubious agendas. Even our respectful community feels the pressures of discontent, uncertainty, and fear engendered by those who serve dark masters. As we work together this evening, let us remember that unity and respect for one another will set a standard for the community we jointly serve. We are all diminished by that which injures any one of us. Help us to make sound decisions that benefit all of our citizens promoting harmony, happiness, and safety for all those who call Belvedere home. These things we ask in your holy name, amen. Welcome, everybody. Under public comment this evening, we need no one registered to speak. So we have first item of business under number four, approval of minutes. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvedere City Council of January 21st, 2020 as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Thank you. The minutes are approved unanimously. I think that Chief Heiser is engaged fighting a fire at this time down somewhere by Warren and Meadow. There was smoke and I saw flashing lights down there and smelled smoke when I got here. So we'll excuse him while he does that. Under public hearing this evening, we have none. Under special messages and proclamations, we have recognition of our retired city clerk Shawna Arco. And Shawna would meet me here in the middle. I find it hard to believe that this young lady is old enough to retire.
She's not.
I guess that's what it is. This is... This is a happy moment for you and a sad moment for all of us. All I can say is that since 2005, when our formal relationship in the city of Belvedere started, you have had a friend, a guiding light, and a mentor. And you have done that for 26 years for everybody that was around you, particularly in your role as a city clerk. The city of Belvedere has been extremely fortunate to have you running stuff here. You are particular. You are driven. You cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. And for that, you set us on a straight course. We will always miss you and we will always welcome you back anytime you come. This is for you. God bless you and enjoy everything the rest of your life.
So thank you for the kind words, Mayor. I started in the city of Belvedere in 1990 in the Public Works Department. I was appointed deputy clerk in 98 and I ran for city clerk in 2001. It has been, it has been a dream job, serving my city of Belvedere. And I thank all of you who were a part of it. She was appointed on my first day as city clerk. And we're probably grateful that we were able to steal her from the local bank. Thank you all for being a part of it and you, Mayor. Andrela.
Under number seven, approval of expenditures, we have none this evening. Under number eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. We have minutes of the committee of the whole public safety and finance and personnel of January 27th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Ratcliffe, second by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, or proposed amendments to the minutes as presented. Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes is approved unanimously. Under nine, unfinished business, and now the fun begins. Under A, we have ordinance 481-H, a second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 150, zoning ordinance of the municipal code, section 150.1.013. Definitions, sections 150.105(c)(4), 150.105(c)(9). Planned business, general business, central business, planned industrial, general industrial, and heavy industrial districts' land uses. Section 150.204D, commercial land uses, and Appendix C, land use summary chart. Specifically, the amendments are in regards to adult-use cannabis dispensaries and cultivation centers. May have a motion to approve ordinance 481-H as presented. Motion, uh, thank you. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Alderman McGee and Alderman Brereton. Questions or comments? Alderman Snow?
I'd like to make a motion to move, instead of permitted by right, move all the things pertaining to cannabis to permitted by special use for all the cannibally boosted.
So is that a motion to amend require a special use application for every cannabis dispensary and grow in every single zoning district?
Yes.
And a motion, do I have a second? I have a second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the proposed amendment now on the floor. Hearing not all, those in favor of the proposed amendment, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
McGee?
No.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
No.
Crawford?
Aye.
Six in favor?
So the proposed amendment passes. Alderman Snow?
I'd also like to make a motion to eliminate the central business district out of the whole equation for having cannabis.
Yeah, my proposed amendment to eliminate the central business district from the ordinance as a place for location of a dispensary. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Alderman Crawford. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the second amendment on the floor this evening? Yes, Alderman Porter.
I guess I would like to ask Alderman Snow, why would you want to do that?
I gather that there are a number of people in the community that are very adamant about not having anything downtown for this, for a number of reasons. A, they just don't want the extra traffic that they perceive being there, and they just don't think it's good for the environment for the downtown area.
Alderman Bird?
I'm just curious, are there any other types of businesses that we put in from the downtown, from the central business district?
Massage parlors.
Okay, besides those?
Let me think. You know, right offhand, I can't, do we have something, Gina? Indoor storage, outdoor storage?
Obviously, your industrial uses are prohibited, your outdoor display, stuff that normally requires a parking lot like car sales and stuff like that, because most downtown properties do not have parking lots. And we don't want to encourage the buildings being torn down to make parking lots. So there are some limited. I guess the staff, the only time I can think of is, and I know this was under a different council, several council members are new, when we talked about having the sidewalk cafes so that businesses could serve on the sidewalk. That was voted down because at that time, the council felt that they didn't want that atmosphere for the downtown. That would be the most recent and biggest discussion for prohibiting land uses downtown.
Alderman Freeman?
So basically, we're talking about not allowing a retail shop in our downtown business district. I mean, a dispensary is a retail business. Also, like, why does other retail businesses have to have special uses permits?
Gina?
Some do. Indoor commercial entertainment, which is your video gaming bar, stuff like that, they do require special uses. Straight retail does not.
Okay. Just no questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Porter.
I will say that last week, I was trying to find a parking space downtown, the stop of one of the shops, and had a hard time finding a parking on State Street. So I know parking is an issue downtown.
No questions or comments concerning the proposed amendment to deny the downtown central business district as a location for a retail pot dispensary? Anybody else have a comment to share? Hearing none, all in favor of passing this amendment to disallow a downtown central business district location, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
No.
McGee?
No.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Brereton?
No.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
No.
Four in favor?
Okay, so by a vote of five to four, the second amendment is defeated. So the first amendment, which was passed, we'll go back to adding that to the original ordinance. And what would be your recommendation on that, Attorney Andrela?
Well, I kind of, in some sense, asked the same question for Ms. Del Rose. It is a somewhat significant change, the ordinance to require a special use with the districts. Do you want time to go back and redraft the ordinance so that the council has it in front of them for a final vote? Or are we comfortable moving forward tonight?
I guess I would just want clarification. When this was originally discussed many meetings ago, there was conversations, should it be permitted, should it be a special use? If it's a special use, should there be built-in setbacks? You know, setbacks from residential properties, setback from this? And the council decided that just have the same setbacks that liquor sales has. So by making it a special use, are you keeping with the same setbacks that were originally discussed? Or did you want me to, typically if a land use is a special use, there's other restrictions on it, either square footage, signage, setbacks, stuff like that. So by making it a special use, did you want me to propose additional setbacks and restrictions on it? Or are you just making it a special use with the restrictions that were already discussed and are in the ordinance now?
One typical example might be that in order to qualify for a special use, you might have to provide adequate onsite parking, or something along those lines.
Alderman Snow?
I guess one of my biggest concerns is that the people in the immediate vicinity that would be notified with the special use and/or publications would have the opportunity to know about it and be able to voice an opinion without it just being carte blanche approved. I think that's important. I think whether it's the operation of owning a warehouse and growing it, I think the surrounding businesses may want to weigh in and have an opinion or voice their concerns so that if anything did need to be addressed, it could be at that point.
Well, if there's no additional requirements desired by the council, they expect the special use or conditions which would qualify somebody for special use, so it's not quite so open-ended. It probably is a matter of changing a couple of letters in a table and not drastic changes. So we could vote on it tonight.
Okay, so we will now vote on the original ordinance as amended by Alderman Snow's amendment, which was voted up. All those in favor of the amended ordinance, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
Nine, or eight in favor?
The ordinance as amended is approved, which limits, which requires a special use permit for a retail pot dispensary.
As well as industrial.
As well as industrial. I have a question, and I'm just going to pose this to the city attorney, and I don't really have to do it now, but I want to ask the question with the council sitting here so we all can hear it. Would elected officials currently serving the city of Belvedere be precluded from being part of a licensing group that would open such a retail establishment?
That would require a bit of research on my part.
It's a question I read in some, a question in one of the little blurb things I get from, it's being considered, I guess at the state level, but I didn't hear an answer for it yet, so I just was curious whether anybody had read anything about that. Okay, well, moving on to item B. Ordinance 482-H, a second reading, an ordinance granting a special use to allow in-vehicle sales or service, an automatic car wash, within the general business district at 1125 North State Street. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the ordinance now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Ordinance 482-H is approved unanimously, which brings us to item C, ordinance 483-H, second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 106, taxation of the Belvedere Municipal Code to add a new Article 11 municipal cannabis retailers' occupation tax. May have a motion to approve ordinance 483-H. Motion by Alderman McGee, second. Okay, thank you, Marcia. Alderman Freeman seconds the motion. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
So ordinance 483 is approved unanimously, and just for everybody's listening at home, that's a 3% tax on selling pot in the city of Belvedere. Under IMR-D, we have a motion to approve city attorney drafting the gas use tax in agreement with Nycor. That will remain on the table. We're getting real close to coming back with a proposal. We were talking to the Azovar people today, and we'll be back before the end of the month with a proposal about the gas tax. Under number 10, new business, resolution number 2103, 2020, a resolution changing the appointment of the IMRF authorization. May have a motion to approve this resolution. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the resolution now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Resolution 2103-2020 is approved unanimously, which brings us to item B, Resolution 2104, 2020. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a letter of credit with Midland State's Bank guaranteeing payment to Philadelphia Insurance Company. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Alderman Crawford? Second. Alderman Frank, thank you. All those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye. Yes, Alderman Stevens?
What are we guaranteeing payment to Philadelphia Insurance Company for?
Well, as was expressed in the committee of the whole meeting, it's an annual payment we make to insure underground fuel tanks. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Resolution 2004-2020 is approved unanimously. Brings us to item C, Resolution 2105-2020, resolution authorizing certain annual parades for 2020. May have a motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman McGee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Resolution 2105, 2020 is approved unanimously. Next, we have motions forwarded from committee of the whole, public safety and finance and personnel, of January 27th, 2020. These motions will be presented by Chairman Crawford. Chairman Crawford, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. A motion to accept the donation of $3,250 from the Walmart Corporation for the funding of three mobile food pantries.
Motion on committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Snow?
And Chief, you had mentioned, I think, in your memo about potentially having these particular events possibly down at the PSB, but I didn't know if the library or some other location like across the street I'm here might be more user-friendly, where people might be inhibited coming up by the PSB?
Yeah, that's definitely something we could talk about, a great suggestion. I would have to check with Deputy Chief Wallace to see if there's something logistically as to why we chose the PSB, but I think that's an excellent idea.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing not all, those in favor of approval, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Crawford?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Excuse me. Thank you, Chairman Crawford. You sure? Okay. Moving on to motions of finance and personnel, which will be presented by Chairman Ratcliffe. Chairman Ratcliffe, you now on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. B, motion to consent and approve the appointment of Daniel Arivolo as alderman for Ward 2 of the city of Belvedere to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Michael Borowitz.
Motion out of committee. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all, those in favor, will when your name is called signify by saying aye, any opposed nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Brereton?
Aye.
Crawford?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved. Mr. Arivolo, would you please come forward in the quarters where you're at?
Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Daniel Arivolo.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of alderman?
Of the duties of the office of alderman.
According to the best of my ability?
To the best. According to the best of my abilities.
I'm done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alderman Arivolo, welcome back to council. You may take your seat. That ends this evening's festivities. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I've got multiple motions to adjourn. Anybody against adjourning?
Me, I got a question about this data hack.
About what?
Her data hack. I found out about it on the news, and I was a little upset that I only found out about it on the news.
Okay. What would you like to know?
What happened? I mean, weren't the older people, weren't advised of it that it happened when it happened? And I found out about it on the news, and I had been asked a lot of questions about it, and I told them nothing like that comes out of the mayor's office ever.
Well, isn't that fine of you to say?
It was in your packet?
It was in your packet, and we contacted law enforcement, the sheriff, and the FBI. We were in meetings the day that it happened to figure out what really happened with that, and we have decided at this point to have the county help us through the situation, which makes ultimate good sense since we're already working them on the phone system. And quite frankly, we're still in the process of, for the most part, we're back up and running. But we did not want to make any public statements. And if we did release a press release verbally to the Rockford Register-Star and to one of the television stations, and we've had our hands full working with that since then.